And we'll call this meeting to order, and we'll start with the roll call. Here.
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 Next move into a moment of silent prayer or private reflection. Amen. If everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And did we have a need for a motion for an executive session? Seeing none, we'll move on to spotlights and recognitions. Superintendent Stone with recognition of continuing teachers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight we come together to celebrate the culmination of dedication, hard work, and unwavering commitment to the noblest of professions. We wholeheartedly believe that teaching is not merely a job, but a lifelong mission to shape young minds and inspire future generations. As we gather here, we celebrate those who have completed three years of teaching, transitioning from their probationary stage to that of the continuing teacher status. This achievement, while often understated in its significance, marks a transition from promising novices to experienced practitioners in the art of education. In an era where the teaching profession faces unique challenges and demands, it is essential to recognize the remarkable accomplishment of these individuals. Nationally, statistics remind us that only two-thirds of those who set out on this path find themselves standing before us tonight, having weathered the storm of those critical initial years. And why is this recognition of accomplishment so vital? The positive influence of experienced educators is immeasurable and undeniable. Research consistently underscores the profound impact of teacher experience on student achievement outcomes. A seminal study conducted by the Learning Policy Institute revealed that student achievement more than tripled between a teacher's fourth year in the classroom compared to their first. This remarkable growth in student achievement marks a defining moment in any educator's career, a testament to the dedication that each one of our honorees has demonstrated. Yet the impact of these educators extends far beyond test scores. Students under the guidance of experienced teachers display a marked reduction in disciplinary referrals and an uptick in attendance rates. Tonight, we celebrate not just the culmination of three years of teaching, but the continuation of a journey that promises to enrich the lives of countless students for years to come. We extend our heartfelt gratitude to these outstanding educators for their profound contributions to our students' growth, and we eagerly anticipate the chapters they will continue to write in their story of education. So when I call your name, we're going to say a few nice words about you. If you could come on up, Dr. Stone has a certificate as well as a small gift in recognition of tonight from the K-12 Foundation. Is Mr. Rahm here? Mr. Rahm, Mr. Rahm, okay. Mr. Rahm is a 4th grade teacher at Jamaica Elementary, and his passion is teaching math. Ms. Kelsey Kendrick. Ms. Kendrick is a 6th grade teacher at Jamaica Elementary and loves to be involved in all the things. She has been a leader of the National Elementary Honors Society, a mentor for her fellow new teachers, advisor for the Homework Club, and one of two STEM fellowship teachers. These are just a few of the many things Ms. Kendrick has accomplished in her first three years. You get to stay, yes. Yes. Ms. Espuro from High School. In a very short amount of time, Ms. Espuro has grown into a teacher leader where she is the Lake Havasu High School Spanish Department Chair. She can be seen every day with a bright smile on her face and ready to make an impact on kids. Thank you, Mrs. Espuro. Mr. Bogus was not able to attend tonight, but he is our juniors honors English teacher from Lake Havasu High School. And also unable to attend was Mr. Collins, one of our math teachers from the high school as well. Next up, we'll have Ms. Hendrickson. Ms. Hendrickson has impacted many Lake Havasu High School students as her students like her science class very well. Not only is she liked in her classroom, she also runs a very popular gaming club on Fridays after school. We appreciate all of her contributions to our students and the LHHS team. Mr. Morgan was not able to make it tonight. He is one of our science teachers as well. He also serves on our baseball team. Ms. Skalkov. As a graduate of Lake Havasu High School, Ms. Skalkov has poured her heart and soul into Lake Havasu High School as an English teacher and student government advisor. She is a tremendous leader that can be found supporting her students not only in their daily learning, but in many events sponsored by Lake Havasu High School. Mr. Stahl was not able to make it. He is one of our history teachers at the high school, and he is also our varsity baseball coach and a fellow alum, just like Ms. Skalkov. Mr. Olmer, Mr. Olmer. Mr. Olmer is our very popular cabinet-making teacher. His class is often filled beyond capacity. He was also not able to make it tonight. Ms. Kane. Ms. Kane is inspiration to staff and students for her incredible dedication and passion to being a teacher. In her 4th grade classroom at Nautilus Elementary, she creates a positive and inspiring learning environment that encourages everyone to strive to do their best. Mrs. Best. Mrs. Best is a 2nd grade teacher and a teacher leader at Ora Grande Classical Academy. She is relentless in her pursuit of impactful moments in her students' daily learning. She is proud of being able to build courage and confidence in her students that is lasting well beyond 2nd grade. She is also committed to the Ora Grande Theater Club and the Parent Teacher Committee as well. Ms. Kane from Ora Grande was not able to make it tonight. She is a part of their intervention team. She's the Language Arts Resource teacher. She is also a supporter of our middle school athletics program. Ms. McGuire. Ms. McGuire is a 1st grade teacher at Ora Grande Classical Academy. Ms. McGuire is a difference-maker in the classroom and out. She thrives to see her students grow in their personal learning and confidence. As the academy's Student Council Advisor, Ms. McGuire develops young leaders for the future by utilizing her own strengths as a teacher leader. Next, Ms. Vogts. And plus one. Ms. Vogts leaves her mark as part of Ora Grande Classical Academy's intervention team where she specializes in the field of mathematics. Mrs. Vogts's heart is felt in everything she does with her students. She champions for all of her students by creating an environment of learning and emotional support. Her passion for serving is the reason she is so successful. And next, from Thunderbolt, Mrs. Earlywine. Mrs. Earlywine teaches resource classes, mentors and coaches general education teachers, and inclusive practices. As we pursue best practices in serving the needs of all students, including our special ed students, we enjoy working with someone who is so committed, knowledgeable, positive, and kind as Mrs. Earlywine. And then last but not least, Mr. Prue. I don't see him. Mr. Prue is our engineering teacher at Thunderbolt. All of our students look forward to being in the shop with him as they get to work on new and interesting projects. So these are the continuing teachers of 2223, or sorry, 2324, one more year forward. And we just greatly appreciate all that you do for our students and your commitment to growing and learning in this very noble profession. Thank you all.
Moving on to 2.2, we have no update from the Lake Havasu City Education Association, Carol Norakowski, but she did want to remind everybody that it's always a good time to contact your legislators. Moving on to 3.1, do we have a call to the public? Seeing none, I'll move on to 4.1. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move that we accept Section 4 of our agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to 5.1, with our superintendent, the first reading of our updated trust model policies.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. There was a very lengthy legislative session, so we have some policy updates from that. These will take effect at the end of October. So tonight, it's just for your information, we will bring it back at the October meeting for an actual vote. So I will quickly review the changes. So in 1103 is governing board organization. We no longer have to have a special meeting to organize as a board before January 15th. That can be held at whatever the regularly scheduled meeting is in January. For 1105, Board Member Conflicts of Interest. It does share that board members cannot vote on the employment of another board member or on the employment of a spouse of a board member unless specifically permitted by law, and that is typically going to be for very small school systems of about 600 students. And the other piece in there is employment of former board members. So now pursuant to ARS 15421E, the district may employ directly or through a third-party contractor an individual who has served as a governing board member during the preceding two years, but only in a position in which the individual will provide services directly to students, including a certified teacher, a substitute teacher, or an individual who provides transportation, instructional support, or student support services. So in the event you would like to work for the school district, it would have to be two years after your term as a board member. We always need bus drivers. For 1-302, this is governing board meetings and open meeting law requirements. This just now lays out that the location has to provide for an adequate amount of seating, sufficient to accommodate reasonably anticipated attendance. And it also shares that unless a board meeting is entirely remote, the agenda will include notice of the time that members of the public will have physical access to the board meeting location. So we will start adding that to our agenda in October. 3-301 is about food services. This has always been our standard, but now they wanted it to be clarified in policy that the district shall maintain standards for the preparation of food and shall require food handlers to possess requisite licenses and/or certification as required by state or county health departments. 3-302 is transportation. The only change there is they're now adding foster students as eligible students for transportation. 3-403 is under technology. What it's sharing there is about the posting requirements. So as you know, we're required to post, and it used to say prominently on our front district page, all of the financial transparency information, beginning teacher salaries, all of those things. Now they are allowing us to have a link on the web, on the front page that may lead to like the business services page where that information could be found. So now you have the option of doing that either way on your webpage. 4-404 adds to the list of providing reasonable accommodations, and it's to address an employee's known limitations related to pregnancy, childbirth, or pregnancy-related medical conditions. And it also clarifies that the district may not be required to provide accommodations if it will cause an undue hardship in the district. And then the final one is simply an update to interscholastic athletics. The page numbers changed for AIA's concussion education, concussion policy, and heat acclimatization, and extranational heat illness management policy. So the numbers just changed. And those are all the updates. These are available. They're on tonight's agenda. Should we receive any comments either from the public? But these are all related to legislative changes, so I don't anticipate any changes for us when I bring this back in October.
Just wanted to make a quick comment, just clarify for public about the, because you know, the board member employment seems a little weird. This is saying that we cannot, this is really limiting what we could do. So they could not hire us as being like an administrator in the district. So it's really, the legislature is trying to like, you know, stem any type of corruption or things going on. So what it does allow for is just really high-need areas. So like if, you know, we need bus drivers, and somebody's available, we could do that. So it's not anything that's really enabling us to come in and get positions. It's actually something restricting us. I want to just make that clear. Is my understanding good on that?
You're absolutely correct.
Any further discussion? Moving on to 6.1, superintendent with student laptops.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. On August 15th, 2023, the board approved the purchase of 96 student laptops. However, at the time the order was placed, the vendor informed us that the model requested was no longer available. As a result, the district must switch to a different vendor and model to meet its needs for replacement computers. In addition, since the time the number of replacement laptop requests has increased, the following purchase reflects inventory required for all current needs. To support elementary and middle school students with access to online elements of adopted curriculum and Amplify CKLA and Science, additional laptops are needed. These purchases will allow additional individual classrooms access to laptop cards rather than sharing across grades. This purchase of up to 192 Lenovo or Dell student laptops in an amount not to exceed $95,000 will be provided to multiple elementary schools and the middle school based on availability at the time of purchase. The computers will be configured and made ready for use by the LHUSD technology staff. The purchase will be made through DHE Computer Systems, Lenovo, or Dell Technologies based on pre-established procurement contracts as cited on quotes, available inventory, and lowest quote pricing. This has been reviewed and approved by the business department. Bond funds or other allowable capital funds will be used to purchase the requested items. And as we're putting on all of the computer purchases, year-to-date computer purchases have exceeded the $100,000 annual cumulative purchase of like items and therefore require governing board approval per the Uniform System of Financial Records.
Do we have any discussion or motion?
How are these laptops equipped? Is it based on the ones we put at the high school?
This is based on the ones that we approved on August 15th that Mr. Baker was here to talk about. They're actually even a little bit better because they don't make that model anymore.
Yeah, they're a little bit better, then that's a good idea.
And if I'm understanding this correctly, there's still not enough computers for every individual student to have access to one full-time, but they will be enough, there will be enough that they will only have to share amongst, like all the 3rd graders will have to share a pool of computers, but they won't have to share with other grades, correct?
In some elementary schools, yes, and at the middle schools. So in each teacher's classroom, there would be a laptop card, which isn't enough for every student, but it's enough for the students who are in there each period.
Gotcha.
I move that we pass this as presented.
I'll second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to 6.2, we have our superintendent with the staff laptops.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. As part of the planned replacement of computers using bond funds, the purchase of 40 staff laptops in an amount not to exceed $48,000 will provide replacements for staff laptop computers at LHUSD that have reached the end-of-life cycle. The purchase of these staff laptops will be distributed to teachers and administrators to access teaching materials for adopted curriculum, complete evaluations, and complete DIBELS testing. This is in line with the commitment to provide computers that meet current standards and keep up with changing needs. The computers will be configured and made ready for use by the LHUSD technology staff. Lenovo laptops will be purchased from Newegg Business or Best Buy based on available inventories. This has been reviewed and approved by the business department. Bond funds or other allowable capital funds will be used to purchase the requested items. And as will be on all agenda items, year-to-date computer purchases have exceeded the $100,000 annual cumulative purchase of like items and therefore require governing board approval per the Uniform System of Financial Records.
How are these equipped?
So these are better than the student computers because your administrators are using them and going to classrooms, taking notes on evaluations. They're also used for student testing, so their processor's a little better than what you would see in the student computers.
So these would be at least I-7s.
I will actually take your word for that.
It says it in the comments, the I-7s.
So if they're I-7s, that's good.
I move to approve item 6.2.
I second it.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to 6.3, student achievement. We have our dybells for kindergarten and increase in Amplify procurement limit.
House Bill 2060 revised Arizona Revised Statute 15701 to require that each governing board adopt an evaluation instrument to administer to kindergarten students to screen for reading deficiencies. The evaluation instrument must be administered within 45 days of the start of school or after a student enrolls. Based on more than 30 years of research, DIBELS with Amplify M-Class is the gold standard assessment, instruction, and intervention suite for early literacy. M-Class is the only licensed mobile provider of DIBELS 8th Edition assessments. In addition, the universal screening and progress monitoring, M-Class provides screening for the risk of dyslexia in students in grade K through 3 through subtests that help identify the early warning signs of reading difficulty. The LHUSD governing board previously adopted DIBELS, which stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills, with Amplify M-Class as the dyslexia screener for students in grades K through 3. This instrument also comports to the new statute, and we are requesting the board adopt DIBELS as the LHUSD's 45-day kindergarten screener. Amplify serves as the primary source of curriculum and assessment for K-8 English Language Arts, Special Education Intervention, and 6 through 8 Science. With the addition of annual licensure requirements for DIBELS M-Class used for the dyslexia and 45-day kindergarten screener, we are requesting to increase the annual procurement amount for Amplify products and assessments from $50,000 to $100,000 annually.
Is there any discussion or motion?
I move that we approve DIBELS.
I will second the motion for 6.3.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to 6.4, we have business services with our architect services Nautilus Elementary for the basketball court and activity courts.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members. The school district submitted a grant application to the Division of School Facilities seeking funding to replace the basketball activity court at Nautilus Elementary. The current court has extensive cracking over much of the surface area. The DSF responded to the grant application and awarded design funds as part of the first phase of the project. Once the design is complete, the project will go back to the DSF for them to consider funding the construction phase of the project. Should the DSF approve funding, the project will come back to the governing board, before the governing board to approve construction. The awarded design amount is $19,856, and work will be procured through the SAVE contract number 24-09-28.
Is there any discussion or motion?
I move that we approve 6.4 as presented.
I'll second, and I do want to point out that because the money's coming from the school board facilities group, that that doesn't come out of our budget, that this is something that the state pays for.
That is correct.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to 6.5, business services with our architect services for Havasu High Elementary for a roof and weatherization design.
Thank you, Mr. President and board members. The school district submitted a grant application to the DSF seeking funding to perform a roof and weatherization assessment at Havasu High Elementary. The DSF approved the application, provided funding, and the assessments were performed in fiscal year '23. The results of the assessment determine the condition of the roof and the weatherization factor for the exterior of the building to be in need of repair or replacement. As a result of the assessments, DSF recently approved additional funding for design work to be performed as the preparatory stage for creating drawings and plans to be used should the DSF approve funding for construction. Once the design is complete, the project will go back to the DSF for them to consider funding the construction phase of the project. Should the DSF approve funding, the project will come back before the governing board to approve construction. The total award design amount is $124,372. Work will be procured through the SAVE contract number 24-09-28.
I move that we approve 6.5 as presented.
I'll second. I also just want to point out, good work by your team. You know, these DSF, when you see that, that's a lot of work, and people knowing how grants work and applying for grants and getting that to save the community money. So I just wanted to point that out. Anytime you see DSF, this is a team working to save money for our town and our taxpayers. And I seconded if I didn't say that all.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to 6.6, business services for the replacement of our chilled water pump at Lake Havasu High School.
Thank you, Mr. President, governing board members. A chilled water pump in the Performing Arts Center at Lake Havasu High School has been experiencing intermittent failure. Due to work order history and difficulty in finding replacement parts to repair and maintain the pump, an application was submitted to the Division of School Facilities seeking funding to replace the pump assembly. Pueblo Mechanical submitted a quote that was included in the application submitted to DSF. The Division of School Facilities approved the application and authorized funding in the amount of $40,292.44 to remove and replace the chilled water pump assembly. Pueblo Mechanical will be procured through one GPA contract, 22-14 PV-05, and all items have been reviewed by purchasing.
Do we have any discussion or motion?
I move we approve 6.6 as presented.
I will second. Is replacing a water pump, is it disruptive to the function of the high school or is it something that can happen during a normal school day without interruption?
So there are several pumps throughout that facility, but more than likely, we'll schedule that at a time where we can shut it down and replace it without causing too much discomfort to those who may be there at that time. We'll get with a contractor, Thomas, our maintenance supervisor is also here, and we're mindful of these types of projects, and we try to either schedule them in the evening hours, weekends, or on breaks, if we can do so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to 6.7, business services for the replacement of the chiller at Ora Grande Classical Academy.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members. An air-cooled chiller at Ora Grande Classical Academy has been experiencing intermittent failure. Due to the intermittent failure, losing six compressors and the age of the equipment, an application was submitted to the Division of School Facilities on July 7th, 2023, seeking funding to replace the air-cooled chiller. Pueblo Mechanical submitted a quote that was included in the application submitted to DSF. The Division of School Facilities approved the application on September 8th, 2023, and authorized funding in the amount of $364,145.5 to remove and replace the chiller. This school site currently has a temporary chiller funded by DSF while we wait for the replacement to be manufactured and installed. Current lead time is approximately 38 weeks. Pueblo Mechanical will be procured through Mojave JOC contract 19F PMAC 2-0904, and all items have been reviewed by purchasing.
Do we have any discussion or motion?
I move to approve 6.7.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to 6.8, business services for the replacement Moving on to 6.8, Business Services for the replacement of our fire alarm system at Jamaica Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. The fire alarm system at Jamaica Elementary is in a state where parts are becoming difficult to find and in some cases not available. The control panel is no longer factory-supported. Due to the current condition of the fire alarm system, an application was submitted to the Division of School Facilities on August 10, 2023, seeking funding to replace the fire alarm system to also include voice alert. Siemens submitted a quote that was included in the application submitted to DSF. The Division of School Facilities approved the application on September 11, 2023, and authorized funding in the amount of $328,946.55 to replace and upgrade the existing system. Siemens will be procured through the Sourcewell Contract 030421-SEI, and all items have been reviewed by purchasing.
As a contractor, one of my licenses is in Fire Systems. This isn't surprising. Fire systems go bad all the time, and if you don't stay on top of it, get it replaced, like this is suggested what we do, you can just be stuck without the right stuff. So, this is important stuff for us to do.
And the state is paying for it.
I make the motion.
I second it.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 6.9, Business Services with our Job Order Contracting for Construction Services for Thunderbolt Student Restrooms.
Mr. President, Board Members, as part of the district's commitment to construct, remodel, and renovate school facilities, as communicated to voters and identified in the November 2016 Bond Voter Pamphlet, the district is recommending to renovate 14 student restrooms at Thunderbolt Middle School. The scope of work, while not a comprehensive list, will include the following: Remove and replace restroom partitions, remove and replace counters and countertops, remove and replace sinks, faucets, and miscellaneous plumbing parts and components, and repair drywall and paint. Concord General Contracting will be procured as a job order contract through the One GPA Cooperative Contract 23-15 PV-03. Policy 3-109 procurement states the maximum dollar amount of an individual job order for a job order contracting construction service shall be $2 million unless otherwise specifically authorized by the board. Concord submitted bid total of $431,077. The district requests a not-to-exceed approval in the amount of $475,000 to provide owner contingency funds during the renovation process. Bond and/or other allowable capital funds will be used to complete the project, and this item has been reviewed and approved by purchasing.
Can you speak to the state of the bathrooms and the need for replacement?
So, the state of the bathrooms are definitely beyond repair in many cases. The partitions are still standing. However, we're at a point where trying to keep them together is, we're just beyond that at this point. So, we are now, we've used completely the useful life of everything that's within the bathroom, and they're in need of being replaced. The facility is 20 something years old, 30 years old, I think? Yeah, so it's in need.
Thank you. I move that we accept 6.9 as presented.
I'll second that.
Wait, actually, I wanted to just ask a question. When will this project be completed?
So, we will start this year, meaning hopefully this calendar year, and we're hoping that it will be completed maybe late spring. That's, they're going to have to, the challenge with that is it's an occupied campus, there's 14 student restrooms, and in order to, Mrs. Bitterman knows how to navigate that school pretty well as a former administrator, in order to not displace the masses of students, we're going to have to shut down individual restrooms, renovate, open them back up before we demo, we can't just demo everything and then they not have facility. So, we're going to have to develop a plan of attack and phase them. So, I'm guessing we're probably looking at spring, maybe even late spring. Millwork right now for cabinetry, anybody who's tried to buy cabinets, there's long lead times with some of that. So, we're not only dealing with just the logistics of trying to make sure 800 and some kids have access to restrooms, but we're also dealing with supply chain, just logistics of getting the proper partitions and millwork that's going to be involved in it. So, we're hoping end of spring.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 6.10, Business Services with Architect Services, the Soul Source for Smoke Tree Elementary, the Continued Design Improvements.
Thank you, Mr. President, Board Members. The district is preparing to move toward the pre-construction phase for site improvements to Smoke Tree Elementary. Smoke Tree Elementary is the last of all eight campuses to receive significant site renovations. Currently, the design work for Smoke Tree Elementary is approximately 80% complete. Additional design services are requested to include a partial interior reconfiguration of the preschool building, preschool restrooms, and preschool parking area. The total of additional design fees total $102,011. Prior to the new fiscal year, EMC 2 could be procured through the One GPA Cooperative, however, that contract expired. They are able to be procured through a SAVE contract, however, the SAVE contract is limited to SFB or DSF projects only. Soul Source procurement is requested due to continuation of work and maintaining continuity of architectural drawings as part of the approximate 80% completion of current drawings for this campus. EMC 2 has also provided architectural drawings for either already completed construction or current construction projects for the other seven campuses in the district. Bond and/or other allowable funds will be used, and it is anticipated that a request for approval for construction services will come before the board this winter.
I move to approve 6.10.
I'll second that.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 611, Business Services, we have the Award of IFB Number 23-24-01 for the HVAC Replacement Project.
Thank you, Mr. President, Board Members. After receipt of federal money through ESAR, the district reviewed the intended use of ESAR money and identified needs that align to appropriately utilize these allocated funds. One of the intended uses of ESAR funds is to assist in improving the efficiency and quality of ventilation systems within occupied facilities. The district conducted visual inspections of all eight school sites and the district office. As a result of the inspection, it was determined that 129 HVAC package units would be replaced due to either age or efficiency, meaning 15 years of age or older, and units with multiple deficiencies or a history of multiple work orders. A listing of the replacement units are available there for you on the action item and on the screen in that chart. It totals the 129 units. On August 2, 2023, the district utilized the procurement services of Sunny Path Associates LLC and issued an invitation for bid IFB Number 232401 for a district-wide HVAC replacement project. The IFB was advertised in the county newspaper, sent to 17 potential vendors, and posted on bonfire, making the IFB publicly available to all interested parties. The IFB was opened on August 22, 2023, at 10:30 a.m. with one response from Pueblo Mechanical Controls in the amount of $3,272,939.69. In accordance with R 7-2-1032, and following the review of the response, it was determined the single response met all IFB requirements. The price submitted was reasonable, and the other prospective bidders had adequate opportunity to respond. The project is scheduled to be completed during the fiscal year 24 and fiscal year 25 school years, with an anticipated completion date of August 31, 2024. The project will be paid for with ESAR funds, and all items have been reviewed by purchasing. I also have a visual of just some aerial photos, up-close photos of the visual assessment that was performed. So, the district office campus, you can see the buildings that are labeled there. On the right-hand side, we're just replacing package units or rooftop units. You might see the abbreviation or the RTU there, that refers to the rooftop unit. So, you can see the breakdown per site on the right-hand side. At Havasupi, you can see the buildings labeled there by their year, being built, so 44 rooftop units, 19 RTUs are over 15 years old, and then there are five additional RTUs that have significant work order history. Jamaica, there's one split system at Jamaica. Jamaica is a chilled water plant, so they have a chiller similar to the Oro Grande project that was just approved earlier, even though that's an air-cooled system. This is a chilled water system, but there is one unit there, it's a split system in the front of the school, that kind of controls the office area there that will be replaced. At Nautilus, this is kind of a hybrid campus, there's a chiller, there's also package units on the roof, 12 rooftop units, five RTUs are over the age of 15 years or older, and there are two additional RTUs that have significant work order history. Oro Grande Classical Academy, not only are they now approved to get a new air-cooled chiller funded by the state, but we're also addressing other, the package units that are in need of repair. There are five RTUs over 15 years old and two additional RTUs that have significant work order history that'll be replaced. Smoke Tree is another chilled water system campus. They have six rooftop units, three RTUs are over 15 years old, and the three additional RTUs have significant work order history. That is primarily on top of the old preschool building down at the bottom left of that picture down there. Starline Elementary, that building is all rooftop units. You can see there, they're just, they're peppered all over the top of that roof. 33 RTUs, 15 years or older, additional, five additional RTUs have significant work order history. So, that campus will, the majority, almost all their package units will be replaced. Thunderbolt Middle School, another chilled watered plant, so there are no rooftop units at this campus, so nothing will be replaced here. Lake Havasu High School is, again, it's a kind of a hybrid version, a mixed bag of chilled water, package units. So, you can see there on the right-hand side, the breakdown by building of how many rooftop units will be replaced and the two additional that have significant work order history. And that's the visual inspection that occurred and the data that supported or drove this IFB.
I definitely appreciate the work that went into this because I know, coming into this, the question was, where are we at with air conditioners? And getting all of this information together, I'm sure took a really huge effort from the team and probably some drones, too, right?
Yeah.
I think, you know, using the ESAR funds is a great way to get this back in a, kind of a maintenance cycle to where we don't have, you know, every, a lot of these things are over 15 years. It's Havasu. You know, is it going to be one summer where we just have everything go out? I think it's so important to get this on schedule, and using these ESAR funds is a way to get this back on schedule to where we can really keep a maintenance, you know, a maintenance tab on this is a great priority for those funds.
And just in for future as well, this is, we talked internally as directors and admin, but a capital improvement plan is, has always been on the radar. We've been talking about that for several years. We're in a place now where we can begin to move in that direction, but as we conducted a simple visual inspection like this to actually just even find a base level as to where we can start, knowing that ESAR monies will expire here in about a year, we needed to move on what we knew to be issues right now in the district and that were completely in alignment with ESAR purposes, which is not always easy to do. But this project aligned well with the intent of ESAR monies. So, as we do this, I mean, as we just talked about with Smoke Tree earlier on in our earlier action item, having now almost eight out of the eight campuses being renovated, we're getting to a point now where we can actually start to develop a capital plan that we can see that will be somewhat sustainable year after year after year. We were just, Thomas and I were reviewing a template that we received from another district on their five-year capital improvement plan, and we were kind of looking at the pros and cons of how they had it structured. So, the conversations are happening, it's just that if we start to move in that direction, now we know there's so many needs that the capital improvement plan at this point would, it would fail in year one because we wouldn't have enough funds to address what our true needs are right away, and it would seem like the capital plan would be unattainable. So, at this point, we're trying to bring things up to speed, and we've been very aggressive with that, thanks to the maintenance department, his team, our grants person, grant specialist, myself, having countless meetings on the phone with the state, trying to get them to return our calls and be responsive as well. There's just a lot of challenges, as you pointed out, and we're moving in the right direction. And with this big project, ESAR time is not on our side because of the fact that, you know, it's going to expire here in basically 12 months. So, I think that we reacted on this just in the right time, and there will be more projects coming. I mean, this is, we're going to launch this and get it going, and we're going to reengage with the procurement firm and then identify another area of need, and we'll address that with remaining ESAR funds. So, we'll be back in front of you probably in the next few months, having this conversation again about something else.
I think.
I move that we approve 6.11 as presented.
I'll second, and I just wanted to say, I think air conditioning is a great place to start, and I'll be looking forward to seeing what we can do with, you know, with improvement plans and things with your team, and I appreciate it.
Can I just inquire a little bit more information about the air conditioning unit at Thunderbolt?
So, the way it's designed there, so that is a chilled water plant, just like Jamaica. So, it's really interesting on how.
There's no need in that.
Correct, because that is a completely chilled-watered system. There are no rooftop units that are going to be addressed. However, there may be some other needs there that if we don't use ESAR monies or bond funds for it, we may petition the state, just like we brought to you a whole bunch of other items here earlier on in the meeting. We, when there's a need, we go to the state first, and actually, it's our responsibility. We have kind of a fiduciary responsibility in going to them first because we need to put our needs in front of them so that they can assess the current reality of all districts throughout the state. It's going to be up to them, though, whether they approve or deny an application, but so far, we've been very successful at getting them to approve our applications because they're complete, there's data to back it, and we follow through. And we don't just call, and when they give us a hard time or they don't answer our calls, we give up. We return the call, and we recall, and we'll call again. So, I mean, I can't say enough for Thomas and his group and for getting out there and pounding the pavement, and I support him as I try to drive this the best I can as well and get on the phone when I need to to help move some things along. So, it's been, it's interesting, it's kind of fun, but it's, sometimes it's frustrating as well.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 612, Business Services for our Vouchers, Student Activity Funds, and Auxiliary Funds.
Thank you, Mr. President, Board Members. Vouchers for June 2023 and August of 2023, K-12 Student Activity Funds for August. for August and auxiliary funds for August 2023 are before you. And just so you, just for those who may be newer, the June is presented there because our encumbrance period just closed, so we, we purposefully don't present June at that time because we still, we, our books are still open, where we still are able to pay expenses as we have invoices trickle in. We're allowed to pay those during the months of July and August so that we can capture any expenses that occurred in the previous fiscal year. So that's why every year it's this way, we get about this time, and I'll present the final final of June, which is before you, and then obviously, last month's vouchers as well.
Do we have a motion or any discussion?
I move to approve 6.12.
I'll second that.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 7.1, we have our informational from our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first thing I'd like to do tonight is, for those who do not know, the city has a committee for the 9/11 ceremony, and they put that on every year, no matter what day of the week 9/11 falls on, but they made a concerted effort this year to make sure that it was available via streaming. And while that is for residents who are at home, really, the primary purpose was to try to make sure that our students can see that in school if it's on a day of school. We really appreciate their efforts and thank them for that, and we're also working with that committee to see how our students can be more involved in that ceremony moving forward. Second, I would like to congratulate our teachers who did reach continuing status. I know we heard a little bit about that, but the significance of it is really important. When you lose a third of your teachers before their fourth year of teaching, that's very difficult for students, and, and the impact that they have on our student achievement is, is amazing. So I just wanted to thank them again, for those who are still here. We really appreciate that. And the other thing I wanted to note is, there's kind of a shift in literacy instruction to the science of reading. So the gold standard for that professional development is called letters. We appreciate that ADE offered us 40 slots in that professional development. We, Jamie and I would love to see the state pay for that for everyone because we think it's really important, but we're really appreciative of our current 40 seats, and I just wanted to thank, we did have 40 of our teachers sign up. This is not a simple professional development, it's 90 hours, they have to put in a lot of work to do this.
Each year.
For, for two years. For two years. It's 90 hours each year for two years. They were there, they were excited about it, and also, while this is kind of a K2, K3 initiative, because it's really important that our kids are reading proficiently by third grade, one of the statistics we kind of looked at is that currently, the price of a student not graduating high school and becoming one of those productive citizens is about $260,000 to the taxpayers. So we, we know the importance of this, and our teachers are working so hard to make sure our kids get there. This professional development is certainly extremely important, but very proud of those who signed up, and, and we know the effort they are putting into, to get that professional development.
Moving on to 7.2, do we have any informational from our governing board members?
I just, just wanted to kind of echo a little bit what Dr. Stone said about our returning teachers. This year, in going around the schools and having daughters in the schools, there was a different energy starting out this year, and I think a lot of that is due to our continuing teachers. We had, I believe, the least amount of, of job openings or, you know, vacancies at the start of the year in a while. So that's one way to kind of have a metric to see that we're going in the right direction. And because of that, you see a lot of positivity and growth among both the teachers and the students, and I wanted to commend everybody for that. I think it's great.
Moving on to 8.1, we have our call to the public. Do we have another call to the public? Saying none, move on to 9.1, board suggestions for any future agenda items. 9.2, any clarifying questions from the media? Then I'll move on to 10.1, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 And we adjourn.[1790.63]